Your morning.
Congratulations, sir.
Yeah, and I'm very envious. Hope you know that on election day. Your time sure is looking good.
Yeah, this is us. About four or five days in jail, so.
No, my very good.
How's this? How are you? See you.
Ready? Got your shower?
Excellent. At least I've been shot about once in the fresh.
Well, don't you want to? If you're wondering. Now, okay, it's your brother.
You know. But at least.
And it will be allowed.
I'm doing well. How about you, Jerry?
Forget news.
Good to hear. Where is there? It's in the radio.
Do you? I will. Isn't it? Well, okay. Oh, well, all right. Yes, I'll do that. Okay. That's.
Yes, light is on. Morning. How are you doing, buddy?
Well.
Wide open, huh?
On her and I. Because her name is different.
I wouldn't wear gray or.
Yeah, I'm a kid.
All right, are you? I got all of you. Oh. I don't think anybody read what I have.
They go back. I can't do it because I'm just like, I'm not doing.
Morning. Just remind everybody, turn your phones off, please. All right. Would you please stand? I've asked David Barber to lead us in our interface.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day today and our many blessings. Father, I thank you for the opportunity to be a part of this meeting today. Father, I want to say thank you and ask that you be with all of our retiring employees and public officials that are being recognized here today. Thank you for their service to Van Zandt County. Father, also want to pray for the incoming public officials as they'll be sworn into office tomorrow. Father, I ask that you be with them, lead, guide, and direct them in everything they do. Father, for all of us, I ask that as we enter into a new year, that we also will turn to you in all decisions that we make each and every day throughout this coming year. I ask today also that you be with the current Commissioners Court and Judge Reese, as they make important decisions in this meeting for you and for Van Zandt County as well. I ask that you be with those who will be traveling during this holiday to and from their destinations. I ask that you give them safe travel. Be with us as we carry on with our responsibilities each and every day. And I ask that you forgive us of our sins, and all this we pray in your name. Amen.
Amen. All right, pledges to the flags, American flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Texas flag.
Honor of the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. You may be seated. I will call this meeting to order at nine oh two on Tuesday, December the thirty first. And we do have the quorum. All the Commissioners and myself are present. Do we have any general announcements? If not, we will move into recognition of years of service. And who's doing that? For the individual employees. Department heads. Okay, do we have any?
I've got one.
Okay.
Oh, come on up. No, I'm coming around. I want to tell everybody about Toby Dyke. It seems like a lot longer than than five years because he's been hanging out, but he finally come back stuck with me for a while. And Toby, I want to tell you thank you for your dedication to Van Zandt County. And I tell everyone, if you're a little bit I had last week, there's not a single Van Zandt County employees that cannot go east or west. You get one man. So we have that type of employees that stay here because they wanted to get. Here's a little.
How many years does that?
There you go. Thank you. All right.
Thank you, Toby.
Is there anybody else? Yes, sir.
I'll go next, Judge. Actually had two present, but I think only one is here this morning. Bill Crawford, if you'll come up, please. Bill is the lead investigator in my office. Jill actually is one of the two employees who predates me. And if you don't know, Bill's nickname is Bloodhound. Part of his job is to, when we need people to come testify in court, to find them and give them a subpoena. And we call him Bloodhound because he never lets us down. We can find him even when they don't want to be found. So Bloodhound Bill, thank you. Forty years for the people of the county because you do a tremendous job serving them. Here's in here also.
Well, it's not. There you go. Thank you.
All right. Is there anybody else? Okay.
Sergeant Davis. I also said a few things about Sergeant Davis. He has been a workhorse over in that jail. He was there when I got there. And he's got a five-year plaque coming to the day, about ten years worth. I got about ten more years worth of service over there in jail, about hours worth. He's one of those guys that go put in a shift. If he needs to stay over, he'll stay over. If he goes home for a couple hours, somebody calls him sick or goes to home sick, we'll get somebody like their nice man to go to the hospital or jail. We called him by second ring, picks up all the answers he comes to work. And we're blessed to have him. I wish I could talk to him and make some more clear. Super hard to find him. He came to us, he grew up in Terry, over in Carroll, graduated high school in nineteen ninety. For whatever reason, he's a good one. Thank you. Did a few years there, wanted to stay in California, just nice as much. He wants to be a California department correction. Let me hear you put in there. Well, he has a secret calendar too. And there's over here, he came back on and he started off with the juvenile petition center here in Grace Lane. Many migrants there over here in the jail where we're blessed to have. I want to say congratulations on the five-year pledge. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank all. I realize it's a little of this. By the time he gets home, he'll be right back. Thank you. Happy way. Happy way. Step up. Mel's getting a ten-year start to the word. She told me yesterday that she actually has fifteen years and seven months of service here at the county. She had right to serve at one point, but they were giving her a ten-year plaque. She's done the same thing here. She worked lots of hours. She's worn lots of hats. I asked Stephanie what else she had done since she'd been here. She started out in jail and worked for a little while there, then moved over to the transport as a deputy. Then went into CID investigations. She worked patrol in the last, since I've been there, what before I got there. She's worked administrative. She's our captain over there. She helps manage all CID and patrol. Type of vehicle maintenance on our fleet, ordered vehicles, make sure the bills get paid. Help me keep that building, the jail, some kind of function on the gap and stuff. It's a never-ending process. Any success that we've had, there's been those people like her, like Jackson Davis, and I can't say thank you enough to say those ones that make this place work. I've got some more, so if you're just not getting the award today. Anyway, I'm blessed to have y'all. Thanks very much. Mel, congratulations. Thank you.
And it. All right. All right, so I would like to recognize the retiring employees. I'll come out there.
I have five employees retiring, will be retiring next in January. And I'm going to go in length of service. I'd like to start with Mr. Pat Jordan. Pat is our constable for Precinct. He did that. Four and third dust, and I want to give you, this is a blank envelope, which is typical of county recognition. We have something coming for you. Sign you. But anyway, Pat's been here. I learned that Pat was here when we were still using the jail on the visual. And he's got lots of stories that he can tell about it, but he's done quite a few things that we just appreciate. How many years has it been?
I started my career forty-four and a half years ago. I got forty in the county. And I've been blessed, been elected in that terms of office.
Oh, wow. Okay, thank you.
And I do also say I appreciate all guys in this room, you know, this side through jailers. That these investigators, the DA's office, all of the office ownership, they all been so kind over the years. And I've been blessed to have been, you know, I'm not leaving because I don't like the job. I'm just so upside down. But I will say something, and people probably think I've lost my mind, but talking about the Commissioners Court here. Does everybody know that I've had a kind of colorful history with a Commissioner over the years, as Sheriff and as Constable? And you know, I could sit here and we could scream and holler at each other, and you know, we've had our issues. Me and this man, we could step outside of this door, we even would know that we weren't best friends. And that's the way that I appreciate y'all because things that happen in this courtroom is going to get heated sometimes. But don't hold that against the person that's asking for something. Just try to understand that. And I believe what y'all have been doing in the last several years is is meeting together. And I think this county is going to be very good for that many years to come. And I tell you, I just will appreciate you, Judge, also. I work with many judges and you're finding it special for me.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. So if you will sit down and then I'm going to bring everybody back up. I didn't mean that. All right. Okay. All right. Next is Sandy Hill, our county auditor. And I learned quickly after getting involved in the county government that the county auditor is like the radar O'Reilly. They know everything. They have everything lined up. And back when I call, when I have to ask a question about another county, I call the auditor before I call the judge. Okay, because I know everybody. And I just, I so appreciate what she's done. But she's thirty years on January eighth, correct? Her official retirement will be in the middle of next month, and we'll have an official retirement then. But I want to thank you for your service. All right, I'm going to miss you so much.
I'm going to miss all of you. But I don't have space like I have yet.
All right, next I want to recognize Pete Pearson. Mr. Pierce, Mr. Pearson started on January of twenty seventeen for a total of eight years as county commissioner. And plaque is being awarded to him for his service. And he has been, did you want to take a picture of you? Okay, thank you. I appreciate your time and all that you've done. And Keith has definitely had the citizens of Van Zandt County in mind in his role as county commissioner, protecting them, making sure we do the right. And he's corrected me many times, and I appreciate him for doing that. Because there are things as a new county judge, I didn't realize or whatnot. He's got the experience to do that. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, we have Joe Carter, who also has been here eight years. Want to recognize him for his many roles serving here in the courthouse and serving as our sheriff for the last four, four years, three years?
Two and a half.
Two and a half years. It seems like four. But anyway, he's been one of those that if there's a need, he'll step up and fill it. And just the most integrity of any person that I've ever seen. And we have lots of conversations together. And I always, I always.
Enlighten him in the operations.
Yes, right. And so whenever, whenever I'm feeling down or depressed or, you know, I'm just having a bad day, I'll call up the sheriff and ask how things are going. And then I realize I don't have it so bad. So anyway, thank you so much.
Yes, it's been an honor. Thank you.
All right. And Mr. Chad Pratt. Mr. Pratt has done an incredible job with our radio project, getting our, getting it up and running. Uh, we're at, I just appreciate his term as county commissioner, appreciate one, and appreciate working with him. All right. You'll hop him back up here so we can get a group picture. Just going to get the five right here. There they are. This is, this is a token of our appreciation for your service and. Here we go. All right. This represents over ninety years of service to our town. Ninety years right here, we will be. Uh, but they will be, I'm sure they will all be available to help. Right, right here. There you go. There you go. All right. Thank y'all. All right. All right, we will now move on to item number three, public comments. Did anybody sign up for public comments? No public comments. We've moved to item number four, consent agenda. Consent agenda items to be considered are routine, and the Commissioners Court will enact by one motion. There's no separate discussion of these items unless the county judge or Commissioner request an item be removed from the consent agenda or considered separately. So are there any items that wish to be removed? There is one correction. There are no minutes for December twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, so we're only approving minutes for December eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. So is there a motion to accept the consent agenda as amended?
Tell me.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Pose like sign. Motion passes. Item number five, discuss and approve the bonds for reelected and newly elected officials of Van Zandt County. That includes Kevin Bridger, Sheriff, Misty Stanbury, Tax Assessor Collector, Mitch Curtis, Commissioner, Precinct One, Cliff Williams, Commissioner, Precinct Three, Two, I'm sorry, Two. Bobby Phillips, Commissioner, Precinct Three, Tommy Monk, Constable, Precinct One, Keith Burton, Constable, Precinct Two, Jeff Corrigan, Constable, Precinct Three, Bob Kiltner, Constable, Precinct Four. Is there a motion to approve these bonds? A motion.
Second.
All right, motion made. Second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Pose like sign. Motion passes. Item number six, discuss and consider approval. Judge Reese to sign a health services agreement between Southern Health Partners and Van Zandt County for the Southern Health Partners to provide onsite dental services by a mobile provider for the jail in the amount of twenty-five hundred every other month. So this, this is a do you want to address this here?
Uh, yes, sir. This is for onsite dental. We approve this. We're trying to give this the what the last seven months. And I kind of get it. I sent the agreement over. Everything's fully booked back there. Did you agree? And that of course, we want to get this done.
Okay.
And this is also amended by the test movement of the standards.
What, what has been our present policy?
It is accurate, but also.
Okay, and, and what is our current dental policy?
Make a form and security them outside. All of them have a gender or identity transported over to different dentist offices and trying to get them in. This is again a little more of a regular planning this land. So assuming they have emergency, this sort of keep up with.
Okay. All right. Is there, is there a motion to approve signing the health services agreement between Southern Health Partners, Van Zandt County for Southern Health Partners to provide onsite dental services by a mobile provider for the jail in the amount of twenty-five hundred every other month?
Motion, Cliff Williams.
All right, is there a second?
Second, LaBrack.
All right, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Pose like sign. Motion passes. Item number seven, discuss and consider approval to name a contracting officer for the Cedar Creek sites structural repair of the dams. The contracting officer will have the authority to sign all necessary documents for the project.
Yes, sir. Judge, I put this on here because this person needs to be an elected official or a member of the court. And I currently hold that spot. And I'll put it on there so we can get a replacement. It's strictly up to the decision of the court. I have talked to Mr. Phillips. He has been involved in some of the things, the dam repair that's going on right now currently. And he said he would be willing to do that, but it's, but I will make that motion until we discuss it. It's up to you guys.
Okay, and most of these dams are located in precinct two.
Most of them are.
There are some in three, too.
There's one coming up that will be in three. It's, it's a little ways, it's a little further down the road. Uh, but most of them are in two, but there is going to be some repairs in one and three.
Okay.
Also in three, not one and three.
Two and three.
Two and three.
Right.
So.
All right.
That's where we are on it. If I don't hear another motion, I'll.
If, if I don't hear another motion, I'll motion that we appoint Bobby Phillips to this position. Beginning January the first.
I'd second that, that motion. Mr. Phillips, you're in agreement to carry out these?
Yes, sir.
Precinct two is my area, so I'd be happy to.
Well, that's why I was hesitant, because I didn't want to get on your toes. If you want, Bobby said you take it, so.
No, I've been strictly forbidden by my granddaughters from saying that word, so I'm going to leave that to Mr., to Commissioner, incoming Commissioner Phillips.
All right. So motion has been made. Second, is there any further discussion to appoint Keith Bobby Phillips as the contracting officer to sign necessary documents for the Cedar Creek sites structural repair of dams? Is there, all those in favor say aye. Oppose like sign. Motion passes. Discuss, consider approving a temporary position for Van Zandt County auditor position to allow training for the month of January twenty twenty-five.
Judge Martin and I, Judge Martin has, I thought he'd been this morning, so you'll have to excuse me. He has appointed a new auditor, county auditor, that will be here January the sixth. Our plan is to train the new auditor, which is Catherine Godzda. And our plan is to train her for two weeks from January the seventeenth. No more than three weeks through the twenty-fourth. So because it's on salary structure, they have two positions as county auditor, we're going to need to come and ask for a temporary position for this time. It's not going to be a required budget amendment for funding because she has come in at a lower salary than what the budget is. And so there should not, there is not any need for a budget amendment to be approved of. If you're in agreement to fund the, to have the temporary position approved, then I will be here for the same thing.
Motion made.
Go ahead, chief.
Motion made.
Motion made.
Build position temporary for two weeks.
His intent is to, he will. She will take her off the box on January the seventeenth and begin that position.
They're represented in, at the end of the day, on January seventeenth.
Well, she said it might go through the twenty-fourth, so why don't we go through the twenty-fourth?
It's important how she is presenting the job.
Sure. I'll second that if he's going through the twenty-fourth.
All right. So a motion is made by Commissioner Pratt, second by Commissioner Pearson to allow a temporary position to run through January twenty-fourth if needed. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Oppose like sign. Motion passes. Item number nine, discuss, consider adopting a Van Zandt County fraud, waste and abuse policy for the Van Zandt County employee handbook to comply with the office attorney general requirements for grants to be in compliance with the Texas government section three, two, one dash point zero, zero, two. Now, I apologize, I didn't get the policy in the binder. And if somebody wants to table this for the good time to read it, I don't have a problem with that. This language is basically came from the, the office of the attorney general. And it's required, the Savins grant, which is the victim notification grant. There's many different things that we were required to do that they, they want us to have this fraud, waste and abuse policy in our, adopted, and we would put it in our employee handbook. So is there a motion to accept the policy?
Tell me, Pearson.
I would second that. I, I read it this morning when, when I got in. And it, it is helpful to know that the office of the attorney general promulgated this and, and it really does. It's still going to comply with the state laws as referenced in the, in the agenda. So I, I think it's proven.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Oppose like sign. Motion pass. Item number ten, discuss, accept and, and accept the audited financial statements ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four for emergency service district number four, for a matter of record to be entered into the commissioners court minutes.
Tell me, Pearson.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Motion made. Second, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Oppose like sign. Motion passes. Item number eleven, discuss, consider approval of Texas County lateral road and bridge expenditure yearly report for the fiscal year ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Oh, if, still filled this out and I just want to read. Get in. Oh, go ahead. So I was going to read the numbers, but if you, yeah, at least the totals, the totals for this year and the increase over last year.
This is a annual report that is required by the Texas county office. And it does reflect the monies that you receive on a county, county lateral road fund check that we get annually. This year, on county road maintenance, the four combined precincts spent six million, three hundred and seventy-eight thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars. And then on your other road expenditures, which includes all other expenditures other than the, the materials, is four million, eight hundred and forty-seven thousand, two hundred and forty-one. For a grand total of expenditures in the road and bridge department for twenty twenty-four of eleven millions, two hundred and twenty-five thousand, five hundred and seventy-nine dollars and fifty-six cents. We also attached the individual precinct expenditure through year review. And the increase over twenty twenty-three is one million, one hundred and ten thousand, nine hundred and forty-five dollars. And out of those expenditures for this year, for twenty twenty-four, we received sixty-one thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars. Probably say conference.
So, and that increase of a million, one, ten, almost, just about a million of that was directly for road and bridge materials.
Yes, it was.
So, and a lot of that, and then we will get some of that money back from the FEMA grant.
Yes.
Because a lot of it had to do with damages on repairing the roads and culverts for FEMA. So someone will come back to. All right. So is there a motion to approve the Texas County lateral road and bridge expenditure yearly report for the fiscal year ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four?
No motion.
All right. Motion made. Is there a second?
Second, Williams.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Oppose like sign. Motion passes. Item number twelve, discuss, consider moving utilities for the radio project leased building into the county's name and continue to pay them from ARPA interest funds.
Yes, Joe, and I put this on there. Our original lease was the city of Will's Point. The city of Will's Point maintained the utilities in their name and billed us quarterly. With the original leases up and during the course of the lease, they had sold the building and the new owner has been generous enough to allow us to extend the lease another three months. The city's not going to keep utilities in their name now that the lease is up. And the new owner does not want utilities in his name. Therefore, we need to move them into the county's name so that we can pay these bills for the next three months. So making motion to the effect that we move them into our name and continue to pay them from ARPA interest fund.
All right. Motion made. Is there a second?
Well, I'll second it. I don't know why it needs to come from ARPA. I mean, we've, we've got utilities budgeted in our budget. It just, it just be paid out of our utilities lineup.
Well, I don't think, are these, these budgeted for this building? We've got utilities for the towers, but I don't think we have.
That's how we've been doing it. So I just kept them track that way because the utilities in the communication budget aren't for the tower sets.
And those utilities are electric and water and gas.
Okay, and the city's been gracious enough to work with us. So all we have to do is transfer in our name. We don't have to turn it off and reconnect and all that. We'll just make a smooth transfer.
All right. Motion made. Second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Oppose like sign. Motion passes. Item number thirteen, discuss, consider accepting a donation from BGP Metals Group for three thousand dollars for the work on Van Zandt County Road Thirty-eight oh five located in precinct three.
Yes, sir. This is a, we precinct three did an extensive road workout on, on Thirty-eight oh five. And after we did this, this group, this recycling group out of Will's Point appreciated it so much. They wanted to make a donation towards it. It is, it was not pre-work, post-work. And it was three thousand dollars. I make a motion to accept this donation of three thousand dollars and it's deposited in the precinct three road and bridge.
Second.
All right. Motion been made. Second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Oppose like sign. Motion passes. Item number fourteen, discuss and approve appointing a committee to evaluate, score and, to evaluate and score the proposals received for the debris monitoring RFP. We, we had a RFP for debris removal, which we have, I think it's coming up. Oh, but, but we have a, another second RFP for the monitoring of that debris that we have received in the request for proposal. And now we need a scoring committee to approve those. So I would recommend that we use the same scoring committee that scored the first debris removal. If that's acceptable.
I agree. Who was it? I forgot. Man, I know I was on it. Keith was on it. So Bobby will be on it. Nicole.
Vicky.
Vicky, Bobby, Vicky, Nicole, me, and Keith. Do you want to stay on it or just get somebody?
No, that's fine.
Stay on it?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Okay. It shouldn't just be one meeting.
Yep.
It should be done. All right. So the motion is to appoint the committee of Brandon Martin, Bobby Phillips, Vicky McAllister, Nicole Nix, and Keith Pearson. Is there motions for, for that?
Motion.
Second, Pearson.
All right. Motion made. Second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Oppose like sign. Motion passed. Item number fifteen, discuss and consider awarding contracts for disaster vegetatives, debris removal, reduction and disposal services for committee recommendations.
Yes, the committee we just spoke of, we met last week and there was two proposals. We scored them. And we came to the conclusion that we need to hire Drew, Drewy Construction for the debris removal. They had the high score and I think they're the most experienced and especially in our area. And they were best fitted for what we need. So I motion to award the contracted jury construction for the debris removal, reduction, disposal services.
All right. Motion is made. Is there a second?
Second, Pearson.
All right. Any further discussion? I would like to say that Drewy had the contract with Tech Scott for eight counties and did, did an incredible job from what I can tell. So all those in favor say aye. Oppose like sign. Motion passes. Item number sixteen, we will now exit our regular meeting and go into closed executive session in compliance with section five, five, one point zero seven, four, the Texas government code to deliberate the appointment, employment evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline or dismissal of public officer or employee or to hear an appoint or charge against an officer or employee. So we will now go into executive session. We'll need you to exit the room.